The Columbus City Council Meeting for June 17, 2024, now come to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Statement of compliance.
I'm sorry, the statement of compliance is in this meeting. The -- thank you. In compliance with the Open Meeting Act, the current copy of this is posted in this meeting room. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Bulkeley.
Here.
Alarcone.
Here.
Barr.
Freshour.
Here.
Heimer.
Here.
Jablonsky.
Here.
Lopez.
Here.
Roth.
Here.
Schilling.
Here.
Mayor Bulkeley, the roll has been called.
Thank you. Mr. Council President.
Our Father, thank you for the opportunity to serve our fellow citizens. Please give us your wisdom and guidance to make the proper decisions entrusted to this governmental body. May our conduct show respect, honor, and to each other as well as to all our citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light What so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming Whose bright stripes and bright stars do the perilous fight? O'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming When the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night That our flag was still there! Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave O'er the land of the free And the home of the brave?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone, to tonight's council meeting. At any time during our meeting, anyone in our audience has any item they would like to address the council with pertaining to something on our agenda, we'd ask that you please come forward, give your name, your address, and we'd ask that you keep your comments to five minutes or less. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Item four, consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a city council member or citizen requests, in which event the item will be removed from consent status and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Item 4A, minutes of the June 3, 2024 city council meeting. Item 4B, minutes of the April 15, 2024 Community Development Agency meeting. Item 4C, minutes of the June 3, 2024 Community Development Agency meeting. Item 4D, reappointment of Tom Pillen, Tom Lengy, and Fernando Lopez Chavez Jr. to the Planning Commission for three-year terms. Item 4E, resolution number R24-70, authorizing payment of various improvement projects. Item 4F, Finance Department reports. And item 4G, payroll and bills on file. Mr. Mayor and council members, is there anything you would like removed from consent?
Mr. Mayor, the items on the consent agenda be approved as presented.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to public hearings.
Item 7A, public hearing application from Columbus Realty Holdings LLC to rezone property located in the vicinity of the northwest corner of 23rd Street and 33rd Avenue from B2 General Commercial District, R1 Single Family Residential District, and C1 Light Industrial District to all B2 General Commercial District, and to amend the future land use map of the comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here this evening to speak against this public hearing? Is there anyone here to speak for this public hearing? You've come all this way, we might as well have you come forward.
Yes, sir. Mark Griffin with Columbus Realty Holdings. I'm from Omaha, Nebraska, here to speak in favor of the rezoning, and here to answer any questions you might have.
Council, have any questions? I know you were before the Planning and Zoning Committee last week.
Yes.
Always move forward from there. Any questions? All right, seeing none, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, move the public hearing be closed.
Agreed. Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7A1, ordinance number 24-16, approving the rezoning.
Mr. Mayor, move the rules be suspended and ordinance number 24-16 be read by number only.
Second. We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 24-16 by number only. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Ordinance number 24-16.
Mr. Mayor, move for the adoption of ordinance number 24-16.
Second. We have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance number 24-16. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B, public hearing redevelopment plan for the Zigar Investments redevelopment project located northeast of the intersection of 8th Street and 12th Avenue. The Planning Commission recommends approval.
Is there anyone here to speak against this public hearing? Anyone here to speak for this public hearing?
Good evening. My name is Jeremiah Perkins. I'm with Klein Williams Law Firm located at 233 South 13th Street in Lincoln, Nebraska, 68508. I'm here to speak on behalf of the redeveloper here, Zigar Investment Properties. So, for brevity's sake, I won't go through all the tax increment financing nuances. This is the city's first time going through the whole process, but I'll try to give a general overview. If you have any questions, feel free to interrupt or ask me at the end. But, so where we are here is, this is a, this resolutions for redevelopment plan that would authorize the use of tax increment financing for a specific redevelopment project that would be used to offset the costs, some eligible costs for reimbursement for TIF, for tax increment financing under the community development law. So here, the project site, the project site is a project site which is generally located at the corner of 8th Street and 12th Avenue. I won't go through and read the legal description to bore all of you, but the project itself contemplates a phased mixed-use development with both commercial and residential components. It would be, the dwelling units are anticipated to consist of about four 18plexes in one 12plex. There would also be 10,000 square feet of commercial space that would be more generalized at this time. They don't have a specific use in mind, that'd be for sale or lease, for specific tenants or owners that would have a more specific project down the road. So for now, it's generalized, and then they're also contemplating or anticipating approximately 750 square feet that would be used for a coffee shop or some other similarly retail use. If you have the redevelopment plan in front of you, there's more specifics included on this, with respect to the site plan on Exhibit C, but I won't get into too much more with that. I'll get into the construction timeline a little bit. So redeveloper here will, is going to construct all infrastructure first for all five phases on the forefront, and then, which is intended to begin this year in 2024, pending approval of this redevelopment plan and the redevelopment agreement. Re developer then intends to construct the private improvements, which is going to be that mixed-use commercial aspect in five separate phases. This phasing helps capture as much tax increment financing as possible with respect to the market on construction in those timelines. So the redevelopment plan requires that the entire, entire project be completed no later than December 31, 2029, which is the end of that fifth year for five phases, but they do anticipate it not to take that long. That's, that's just to ensure that we have sufficient time to get it all constructed. So here, the total estimated cost of the redevelopment project is approximately $19,741,000. Approximately $2,278,000 of total construction cost is anticipated to be composed of eligible public improvements under the act. An itemized list of the estimated public improvements is included on Exhibit B, but includes things like the roads, sewer, some of that grading, things like that, that are those eligible public improvements under the act which are, which are specified there. This redevelopment plan would enable the city to authorize issuance of a TIF bond in the amount of approximately $2,268,293. So the anticipated TIF uses is greater than that request here, which is in conformity with the act. So as part of the community development law, there is required that a but-for test or a statement of need, and the redevelopment project here is not feasible without the use of TIF. The redevelopers represented that they require TIF for the assistance with respect to the public infrastructure that's outlined in that Exhibit E, which would allow for, for the project to move forward as-is and to reduce the potential rental rates for both the residential and the commercial aspect to reflect the high, the high prices of construction, interest rates, those types of things. As far as the conformance with the comprehensive plan, cost-benefit analysis, statutory elements, I won't get into all that with, in specificity, but we don't see any issues here with respect to TIF. As the Planning Commission has determined, this is in conformance with the comprehensive plan. We don't see any other issues. This, this project would be to overall benefit to the city. So pending any questions, that's all I have for you.
Does the council have any questions for Jeremy, Jeremiah? No, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
I move the public hearing be closed.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 7B1, resolution number R24-71, approving the redevelopment plan.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R2471, approving and redevelopment plan be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve resolution R24-71. Any discussion?
I think it's valuable, Jeremiah did a good job of overviewing what they're using tax increment financing for, but he made a statement that it authorizes the city to issue a bond. I just want to make sure the public understands there's a difference in issuing the bond and holding the bond. The city is authorized to issue the bond, but we do not hold the debt. The developer holds the bond or the debt, and the property taxes that the developer pays on the improvements are what pay off that bond. So I just wanted to clarify that. There's no city funds involved in any of this.
Good explanation. Thank you. All right, we have more, do we have a motion and a second?
Yes.
All those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to new business.
Item 13A, application from Knights of Columbus for a special designated liquor license on 26th Avenue between 13th and 14th Streets for designated times Friday, August 9 through Sunday, August 11, 2024, for a beer garden in conjunction with Columbus Days.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the application from the Knights of Columbus for a special designation liquor license be approved.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the application from the Knights of Columbus for a special designated liquor license. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13B, appointment of Noah Lindberg as a firefighter.
Council members, the mayor with your permission wishes to submit the name of Noah Lindberg for conditional appointment to the position of firefighter, subject to the successful completion of all pre-employment requirements. Per council rules, the two-week waiting period is waived for an appointment of a paid firefighter. Mr. Lindberg has been certified by the Civil Service Commission at their meeting held April 3, 2024. Noah was born in Lincoln, Nebraska, grew up in the Elkhorn area, and graduated from Elkhorn High School in 2023. While in high school, he took fire science technology classes at Metro Community College and received his firefighter I and hazmat operation certification certifications. Noah has had an interest in firefighting since childhood. He grew up spending time around the Underwood Volunteer Fire Department with his uncle, cousin, and grandfather. He has served since 2022 as a volunteer firefighter for the village of Waterloo, Nebraska. He has also received his national EMT certification. In his free time, he likes to spend time with loved ones and enjoy the great outdoors. Council members, do I have a motion for this appointment?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion approved. Noah, would you please come forward and introduce yourself to us and the community? And the family can sit back and not worry.
Good evening. My name is Noah Lindberg. I'm from Elkhorn, Nebraska, and I'd like to thank Chief Gray and city council for the opportunity to serve the city of Columbus as a firefighter.
Thank you. Welcome.
Item 13C, appointment of Kathy Kowabnowski to the library board to fill a vacancy until September of 2027.
Council members, the mayor with your permission wishes to submit the following name to, for an appointment to the library board on June 17, 2024 city council meeting, per council rules. Should be filling a vacant term until September 2027. Kathy has been a Columbus resident for over 30 years. She teaches English at the Columbus High School and has also taught Spanish for many years. Her husband was born and raised in Columbus, and they have two grown daughters. Kathy is a large member of the UNL Parent Association Board and is starting her second term as a board member for Central Hispano Community, Nebraska, here in Columbus. Her experience with these groups has grown her interest in public service, combined with the love of literature that has been the basis of her career. The Columbus Public Library is a perfect place for her to continue her service. She firmly believes in CPL mission and supports all the ways the library benefits the community of Columbus. She looks forward to this opportunity. Council members, do I entertain a motion for this appointment?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appointment. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes. Kathy, since you made the effort to come, which most of our appoint, most of our appointees don't, would you like to come up and at least say hello and introduce yourself? Because we are so happy to have volunteers come forward and be willing to serve.
I, I'm Kathy Kowabnowski, and I'm pretty excited about this, so thank you.
You're welcome, and we're excited to have you. Thank you.
Item 13D, purchase from ProVantage in the amount of $10,980 for computers and accessories for multiple departments.
Now, Mr. Mayor, I move the purchase for, from ProVantage in the amount of $10,980 for computers and accessories be approved.
We have a motion and a second to approve the purchase from ProVantage. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye, those opposed nay. Motion passes.
Item 13E, comments from the mayor and city council members in compliance with the Open Meetings Act. No discussion may be held on this item.
Do we have any council members with comments this evening? I have nothing to add this evening, so we'll move on to resolutions.
Item 14A, resolution number R24-72, approving amendment number one to the Engineering Services Agreement with RVW Incorporated, and an amount not to exceed $8,300 for construction phase services for the fiber network project 2024. This is CIP number 24-28. This is CIP number 24-28.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R24-72 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R24-72. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 14B, resolution number R24-73, approving the change order number one to construction contract with Bauer Underground Incorporated in the amount of $40,207.60 for Fiber Network Project 2024. This is CIP number 24-28.
Mr. Mayor, I move that resolution number R24-73 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution R24-73. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 14C, resolution number R24-74, memorandum of understanding with Central Hispano for Columbus Historical Downtown Creative District.
Mr. Mayor, I move resolution number R2474 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve resolution number R24-74. Any discussion? Do you want to just explain what this does for our community and what it is all involved with?
Sure, I'm going to let Jean do that because she's our staff lead for the Creative District.
And I know we have a lot of participants today, so please.
The Downtown Creative District was started, it was actually certified over a year ago, and we are currently partners with Columbus Arts Council. But in looking at the programming and some of the events that we want to start doing in the Creative District, it became evident that it would be very beneficial to have more of a cultural partnership too, as well as the art side of things. And so Ellie Coffin, who is with the Arts Council and myself, met with Central Hispano last week, and they have accepted the partnership. This will help us with grant applications and then just furthering diversity and cultural type events in the area as well as art events, so.
Awesome. I mean, it sounds like a great partnership, and I think it's a good step.
Yeah, I think anytime you can collaborate with organizations, it just makes you stronger, so.
Sounds very good. Any other points of view, discussion?
Just going to help with getting grants when you have multicultural programs going on.
Right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 14D, resolution number R24-75, terminating the grant agreement with the Columbus Area Chamber of Commerce.
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we move to table this item.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to table this item to the July 1st council meeting. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes.
Item 14E, resolution number R24-76, awarding the Community Development Block grant funds to DTCR LLC, Lindsay Thompson, and Early Enterprises LLC. The Business Improvement Board recommends approval.
Mr. Mayor, I motion that resolution number R24-76 be adopted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt resolution number R24-76. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes. Brings us up to unfinished business.
Item 19A, performance evaluation of City Administrator Tara Vasicek.
Mr. Mayor, I move that the City Council go in a closed session at this time. The subject matter to be discussed in closed session shall be the performance evaluation of City Administrator Tara Vasicek. The reason for going into closed session is for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of an individual. Mayor James Bokley and City Attorney Neil Valeris will be included in this closed session.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. All those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. Motion passes. The City Council has voted to go into closed session at this time. The subject of matter to be discussed in closed session shall be the performance evaluation of City Administrator Tara Vasicek. The reason for going into closed session is for the prevention of needless injury to the reputation of an individual. Rich Jablonsky, James Bokley, the mayor, James Bokley, City Attorney Neil Valeris will be included in this closed session. We will adjourn back to the city conference. Back here, okay? And we'll be back. The large conference room, and then we'll be back, okay?
This is historical. This is our first.
This is the first time back. That's right.
You all have your...
You all have your...
I would entertain a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second to come out of executive session. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by aye; those opposed, nay. I can't see. Is it there?
It did pass.
Motion pass. Meeting adjourned. Yeah, no.
It's okay.
That's okay, you're still in training. We understand.